Your father, he got sick, so he won't be here. We can take over his office.
My neighbors all have COVID.
He thinks it's a threat.
Computer chip under my box. Put the box there.
I was doing a zoom chat that once. I don't know what happened.
Put me all the way over here. I should have a table open myself.
Who's like suing you? Why? I'm scared.
What'd you say?
I'm very nice for you.
She was a little more depressed.
I got, I got the money.
As far as we know.
Atlanta's flying in. They're going to be together. Grandmother's happy.
I got a couple of sanders.
I'm really worried about him.
Yes.
I have a good one. Kurt, 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 Kurt. I said, I have five acres and a house. We had a little yesterday.
It's crazy.
Is that it? The worst study show. Kurt's not. This is.
Her policy changed. It used to be twenty-four hours.
Yeah, this is. Look at this one. This one get cold. It's gonna chill outside. I have three. Yeah. I was trying to go all day over here without shaving this past.
I broke down today. I have an electric break. So for the first time, they've got the two point four.
Oh, I did that. I used to use that safety razor.
That's.
Yeah, I really have myself. How's it going? All right. It's me, Hank. Thank you. Oh, yeah.
I don't think it's good. You gotta wait till Thanksgiving.
Thank you. How's it going?
You got to that.
Yeah, last time.
No, I do that.
Yeah.
Some stuff right now.
Yeah.
My dad. My last friend is sorry. I don't know. Well, she can be here. They chop off. I love it. Yeah, that's true. Oh, wow. Amanda, I don't want.
To go again. I think they give it. I think they're expensive. I just think about. I don't know. I think that's what I need to be there is to start talking.
Oh, yeah. Oh.
Oh. I love it. I'm thinking of Mary Chan.
How are you?
How are you?
I'm good. Last night, last night. He's still good. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's. So far, so good. Shirt, light. Guy had a strong. Strong. Good name. Send you a big line. Call me up. So far. Yeah. Yeah. Sounds absurd.
Last episode.
Appreciate that. Right, absolutely. Two years later.
Yeah. You put some. A sandwich.
I saw a couple. Heard all the stories. Just.
I'm going. And then she said.
Oh, come on.
It's great. President did.
Yeah.
Art.
Right.
Magic. Same thing. I wish I was super.
It's a religious.
I like somebody I just.
Well. If. I keep. Let's know. Watch this whole switch. Take your. Who's hot? CR. We could get some. Definitely. Oh, are you? Oh, okay. Trust me. It's a good use of. Well, the science, the science is all about now. So they must be. They've been close. Well, maybe they will. You know, that's. Benny, ready? Testing, testing. I was looking. I said, hold. How about that? Testing, testing. I now call an order. This is a council meeting of November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, time is seven P M. Before we begin tonight, I just want to remind everybody that this is about city business. I'm going to ask that we keep decorum and officials at the day should not be interrupted, as well as constituents when they speak at the podium. So let's try to be as civil as possible and move the business mantle. Opening prayer. We have Pastor Steve Pope with us tonight. If you'd like to come on. He goes to prayer.
God of all creation, of justice and mercy, and this week that we celebrate Thanksgiving. We thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. We thank you for your many and abundant blessings. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for our community and all who serve it. This evening, I pray for each person gathered here for the intent of doing good work. Give them a spirit of service. Remind them that they are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be the leaders of your people that your people need, to represent all members of the community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. Bless their efforts with insight, guided by understanding and wisdom. Give each person clarity of mind and open heart, creativity, compassion, due diligence, integrity, and empathy. Help them act with character and conviction. Help them to discern your will and work to create a strong and healthy community. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Help them to have grace and to respect the dignity of those who disagree with them. Grant them the ability to work in harmony even when there is an honest disagreement. Help them to use our resources wisely and well, with reverence your creation deserves. What I pray for the agenda set before them today. Give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in our city. And finally, Lord, renew them with the strength of your presence and joy of helping to build a worthy community. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their past. Confident in your goodness and love, I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ben, would you please tell the roll?
Number McLeister, here. Number Matheny, here. Number Orff, here. Number Holt, here. Number Wired, here. Number Where, here. Number Shroyer, here. Seven.
I have a motion in the second to approve the minutes from November sixth, twenty twenty. Second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I have a motion in the second to amend the agenda to include a discussion of the income tax proposal prior to public comment in order to provide clarity on the proposal. No vote is taken until after the public comments are.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the floor is not open for officials to discuss the items appearing on tonight's. Any comments, you'll leave the, what, the recapings? All right, you're gonna have to forgive me. I had an eye procedure, so I'm not. The creators are reading right now. So collective legislatures going to be three pieces of legislation tonight. They're going to be ordinance ninety-one, twenty twenty-three, ninety-eight, twenty twenty-three, and resolution twenty twenty-three. And those are going to be discussing the income tax proposals that we have. So first, there's going to be, the proposal is to cap at one and a half percent. And then placing a point two five percent income, income increase on the ballot for March twenty twenty-four. So in effect, this means that everybody would be paying point two five percent extra. Would that affects the reciprocity for people that are working outside and for everybody working in. So it would equally affect all participants, all residents, or people working in the city. So I hope that kind of clarifies everything. Puts it in simple terms, because if you look at all three ordinances, it becomes very complex. But that's what it boils down to. And I believe that's the easiest way to describe the three pieces of legislation. So if you guys want to have a comment on that now, or if you guys feel it needs to have additional clarity. In my opinion, this, this takes what we heard last week, and it gives the voters, every single voter in the ballot box has the decision to vote yes or no on this. So we've put it in the hands of people, and I think that's exactly what we asked for last week. And that seems to be the comments that we're getting. And I think to us, we've responded to it. So if anybody else wants to comment on that, I'll pass the microphone around.
Matt, just real quick, on a forty thousand dollar a year job. Forty thousand dollar a year job, that quarter percent people, how many dollars a year?
It's a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
For the year.
Yep.
You know, after kind of going back after Monday night's meeting and looking at your comments and looking at what would work with the administration and looking at the budget, we did feel like this gave us, it gave you options. And I think what we heard most importantly last week was just ask us. We are the citizens. We want to be asked if we want taxation. We want to be asked, if we don't want taxation, then what cuts need to be made? And we know the property tax was just on and with the schools. And so that's why we were limiting the property tax element and felt that still we have one of the lowest tax, income tax rates in our community. And kind of looked at some other, maybe more creative ways that we could do income tax, still hold the one and a half percent reciprocity. So we heard you loudly clear last week with that, and then they'll increase it by the point two five. So this also gives us three months. Many who talked about it seemed like it was rushing through. In order to put this on next year, the primaries in March, and because it's the presidential year, and so that's why we have to kind of move this over within these next weeks. That still gives us plenty of time to have community meetings, to talk about the plans that we have for this, which are mainly the fire EMS, which if you look at our general budget, is where so much money comes from. Now, some of you said last week, you know, well, we don't need as much police. We don't need as much. Well, now we're leaving that up to you as the voters to decide what you deem necessary. So. Good.
So one of the things that I heard was that everybody needs to share this. And I wanted to make sure that those individuals that were not here for the budget process, when we voted on that, there were several items that, you know, through the facilities report, they talked about buildings. There were items that are continually being pushed off until a later date. Sooner or later, they're going to have to be done. And I asked administration to kind of put together that list and to read through the things that were originally on the budget that were removed. And yet we still came up short at that one point five million dollars. So the Monticello booster pump station, Willow Way water line replacement, clarifier roof at the water treatment plant, replacement of the two thousand and seven Pierce ladder truck, and replacement of two fire prevention vehicles, assault dump truck, a service garage sanitary drain, and some residential paving streets, uh, streets paving. Price Park playground equipment will be postponed, civic center parking lot, the event hall flooring and windows, Dogwood Park, Glenwood pickleball courts, asphalt for the ball field parking lot, Dogwood Shelter inside renovation, and Dogwood Pool renovations are all being postponed. So we're still asking for everybody to contribute. We're asking for that, that quarter percent from everybody. And then we're still holding off on things and still falling short. So we're still going to have to find solutions, to find ways to fix these things, to improve all these things, to replace these things. They're only getting older, and they're getting more expensive to replace. So keep that in mind as you're thinking through what your decision is going to be. This vote that takes place in March will not go into effect until twenty twenty-five. This vote that takes place in March will not go into effect until 2025. So dollars received are still being pushed back. So we've actually added a whole another year to the process of wanting to fill this gap.
If you might follow up on Dave's insight into delaying capital expenditures, we tend to skip over, without much detail, a topic like residential streets. I asked our engineer today, how many streets at this very moment, how many miles of street do you think need to be repaid right now, before the winter? He said, at least eight. At least eight. Budget is roughly $350,000 a year for street pay. We get 1.5 miles of that. So to get those eight then, pre-winter, is $2 million. So to Dave's point, that if the roads go, costs grow exponentially for reconstruction and rebuilding. Salway, Mr. Orr likes to walk, is the edges of that road, pick them up, the road was improperly paved a number of years ago, the base wasn't addressed, and it's likely if that road gets too far along, it would have to be rebuilt, base up. Mark work over near work needs serious attention. Again, inadequate base work, and now the asphalt is failing. So to this, to Dave's point, you will have an opportunity to define the community you want to live in, but the list of roads that require attention is not going to shrink over the next six months. In fact, it's going to grow. So, so here it is.
Administration, any comments on that? Okay. All right, going to close the floor to council, and let's go on to public speaks. So at this time, members of the public wishing to address the council may do so. Each speaker would give five minutes. Comments should be limited to legislative items appearing on tonight's agenda only. The rules for speaking will be on the screen. This will serve as the only warning for everybody in attendance. Any violation of the rules will result in ejection of the premises. Those wishing to speak, please address first to the podium, and I'll leave the microphone up here, and please start with your name and address. And you can pick it up, or sometimes you can hear from here.
Jeff Stocker, S.T.O.C.K.E.R. Thank you, members of council. I'm sorry, your address? Oh, I'm sorry, 1463 Wilbur Drive, Northeast, 44720. Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I am speaking tonight regarding ordinance 91-2023, the repeal of credits for taxes paid to other municipalities, as well as the ordinances 98-2023 and 99-2023, the proposed ballot measure that will increase taxes from 1.5% to 1.75%. First, I was pleased last week that council voted to table the tax credit issue, and I was pleased that member Warren and member Orr publicly stated that they opposed this measure last week. Others may have added their opposition before the resolution was tabled, but I sincerely hope that this ordinance stays where I personally feel it belongs on table. I was, however, troubled that council would have adopted what would have amounted to a 1.5% tax increase upon only select residents, and without putting that to a public vote. I was troubled that council tabled the tax credit ordinance only after intense public criticism, and I was deeply troubled that after what I could only assume was vigorous discussion, debate, and deliberation, the council brought forth what I refer to as a half-baked measure in the very first place. Indeed, it was a resident last week, Mr. Saylor, who advanced the idea of a modest tax increase for all North Canton taxpayers during last week's public speaks, and it's his idea that is largely now being discussed before us tonight. So for what it's worth, I am very willing to accept your work as public servants, that the only way to remain fiscally solvent and physically safe is to raise taxes for the purpose of both general funding and also improved facilities and services. And for what it's worth, again, I intend to support that proposed tax increase, and I'll help you to pass it. But I would encourage the members of council to do as I recently did and visit the North Canton City Charter. It was there that I encountered a flow chart of our city government, and it's here that you see that the mayor and city council are equal members on the same level of the diagram, sort of the checks and balances of city government. But above the mayor and council is another block, and it's labeled North Canton Voters. Put another way, your authority comes from us. I would encourage council to think of this diagram as you draft and consider further legislation. Thank you.
Anyone else willing to, or wishing to address council time?
Holly, 333 Winston Avenue, Northeast. I'm just gonna speed through my mind here. I appreciate all the things that Mr. Stocker just said, I agree with him wholeheartedly. I appreciate the changes you guys have come up with, you've listened to everybody, I've spoken to my councilperson. David, you didn't say everything that I was hoping you would say tonight, you would tell the people, hey, here's what this is, it's not going to pay for. I just kind of want to say something that bothers me, though, because most of you know, I'm pretty vocal on the topic of transparency with the voters and the ability for the voters to be heard. And when, I think it was the number six, when there was the presentation of this facility plan, on the agenda, it was labeled as the 2023 facility plan, it was not labeled as a tax change. There's no language in the actual facility plan that's on the website available to the public that talks about the tax change, that's to talk about how we're going to pay for it. So that, you mean, you guys motioned out of committee to an agenda here, a tax change, but you called it the facility plan that night. So there must be on the agenda, it did show up as 91, 2023, as a tax change, it didn't show up as the facility plan. So we do have a little bit of nomenclature issue there for me, I think we called it two different things in two different settings, and I would just give that feedback to be mindful of that. Because of that, you really have not motioned 91, 2023 ever out of committee. Tonight, you're going to take Rule 23 and use that, I believe, instead of aside, so that you can get the free reading this year before the end of the year, and I appreciate that. But you still have never motioned this tax change, whether it was the original way it was structured, or the way you're going to structure it down out of the committee. And that's how I see that, I think I tell a lot of voters that. But it's absolutely mindful of that position on the agenda when you word something, that you make sure those two events match up, and they don't look as two different things. Nobody who looked at that agenda for the committee of the whole knew that they could come to a meeting that night, and knew about the tax change was why it was impacting them. So, you know, people look at those agendas, they can only come and see on what's on the agenda. Had they known, hey, something's about to happen here, it's going to financially impact me and my family, that might impact their voice here at the day. So thank you again, I do appreciate all the feedback, I like what Mr. Stocker said. Member Warren, Mr. Orr, with Amy, all of you have been very vocal here, and I know behind the scenes, you all have had discussion and you've heard the voices. I think that all of that is not fall upon deaf ears here, we do appreciate that, so thank you.
Laurie Tripp, 1127 East Minkle Street, North Canton, Ohio. Yes, I'm going to speak to under ordinance 98, 2023, and the tax repeal. But again, who caused this problem? Who caused this problem? You folks at City Hall caused it. Mr. Revolt, you speak of street paving, a major issue. What happened earlier this year? Why didn't the levy get placed on the ballot? And then you take it to City Hall, or to the Ohio Supreme Court? Why did that happen? How much money did that cost the city this year? How much? A lot of money. And now, each of you, you know, it's not going to get on till at least 2025. Why did that happen? And you take it to the Supreme Court at a pretty good cost to the city, and nobody accepts responsibility for that. But now, you place the burden on the city with an income tax increase. And I, as I've talked to councilperson Matheny, I implore you, anything you do for safety services, I implore, but as of right now, can you tell, give me a breakdown of the estimates to move City Hall to their new location? Can you give me an estimate? How much is going to cost the city to renovate City Hall for the police department? Can you give me a cost on how much it's going to cost to build a new fire EMS station? And where's it gonna be? You haven't told anybody yet, nothing. So again, what are you hiding? What are you hiding? Now, just four years ago, we spent $150,000 to move city council and bring the engineer department up to City Hall. Two years ago, we spent another $150,000 to renovate City Hall. Why? Why was this necessary? All it's done is created Safe Belt, which has pretty put a dent in the trust of local business, of local business. Safe Belt, it's pretty created problems. Who created it? Once again, City Hall, not the citizens, not the citizens. In fact, if you check the check register, and thank you, by the way, Mrs. Alabac for getting me on stream with the checks for Safe Belt, but so far, we have paid Safe Belt this year almost $700,000 for the first 10 months. And what's it done? Created animosity amongst businesses, created animosity. Now, what other thing could you possibly do? How about taking a look at some of the salaries at City Hall? Take a look at some of the salaries. We've heard you gotta pay people good money to get good work. Well, I would ask the question, is it good work that all of a sudden we're now in a budget deficit? And again, who created it? City Hall. So why don't you take a look at maybe freezing salaries next year for city employees in the administrative department that work inside City Hall, not street workers, anybody like that, but inside City Hall? Take a look at maybe reducing some of the insurance costs that it might cost the city. I don't know what they are, but I've heard they're pretty high. So with that, I'm just gonna quit, but again, you folks created it, not the citizens. Thank you.
Tucker Osborn, 307 Frederick Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I was going to prepare my remarks, but I think about what goes on in the city government, it gets me so down I can't even get out of bed. Why is it that every municipality in this county and in adjoining counties has at least a 2% income tax rate? They also don't provide services to their citizens, and they know that in order to do that, you have to have a solid, steady income stream. Our self-appointed economic expert here continually reminds you people that we have to leave our income tax rate low in order to attract businesses. Who pays income taxes? The employees of these businesses, not these businesses. And I don't know where you think you're going to war to, we've had nothing to war to anyway. Why do we have four property tax levies, road levy, EMS levy, storm surge, fire EMS? It's because our 1.5% income tax rate is inadequate. The best thing the prior administration could have done is when Hoover announced they were gone, is to put on the ballot an increase of income taxes to 2%. I think knowing that Hoover was leaving, we were losing our cash count, I think voters would have approved it. You could do that now, and you could bargain with the residents who were about to lose or could have lost their reciprocity for income taxes. Make a bargain, we will lower your obligation to a half a percent, and then maybe the city would have the revenue it needs. By having this low income tax rate all these years, you're denying all these improvements that the city desperately needs, and then you thump your chest up, look at what we're doing, we have the lowest income tax rate in the city, we can't pay your streets, but look, isn't that just standing? This problem has been at least 15 years into making, and probably a little longer, I don't know when the city class changes, went to 1.5. You have the City of Green, who recently incorporated, and I don't know where they started out, they knew right off the bat, they needed 2%. You got Canton that's gone to 2.5. So I would propose that you bargain, and by the way, I don't think this is a fair City residents are going to be paying 1.3 quarters, and you're only going to be collecting a quarter from the people who work outside of the city. Why not make it a little more of a level playing ground and get a half a percent? That's a more equitable arrangement, I think. I have proposed many of the bunch of this for at least 10 years in a row, and how do you think you can continue with the lowest income tax rate, even under this proposal? You're going to be the lowest income tax rate in all of Stark County and adjoining communities. What's that? Gotcha. And there's been no explanation as to how we're suddenly in deficit spending. I have to hand to Mr. Tripp, he's been examining finances, and maybe I can get up the energy to look into, but it's just so depressing. And now I hear people thumping their chest, we have the lowest income tax rate in the city, or the Stark County. It's the employees that pay the income taxes, not the businesses. And then maybe you can get rid of all these property tax levies, and you don't have to go through all that expense of... of putting on the ballot and hoping and praying that the voters will pass them. You won't be competing with the school district because I need their property tax money. For years and years, you gave it away. That's all I saw here for years. And they were all just giveaways. They all located here. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address that? Final call? Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance 93-2023?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into an agreement with North Canton Community Improvement Corporation for the conveyance of the real property known as parts of Outlot 274 and Outlot 273 in the city of North Canton, Stark County, parcel number 920-8445, from the city to the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation.
Financing.
Okay. We are just going to be who has the properties. This is the third, second reading. Any other questions or concerns? If not, I move to adopt.
Second.
Can I?
Sure. Sure.
Because I know we mentioned it in committee, but I've seen the question on our social media. Just again, how we acquired this property was in 2006. A small water system on our border went bankrupt. And we partially acquired them and also partially acquired them. This property used to have a small water tower from that water system on it. The water tower is now gone. We no longer can.
Thank you. Cindy, we have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of 90, ordinance 94-2023?
An ordinance amending Chapter 192 income tax of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton in order to ensure compliance with changes in state law.
Second.
Okay. Gina, are there any updates you need to talk about?
Nothing has changed.
Okay, no more night time reading? Okay, any questions, concerns? Okay, then I move to adopt.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance 95-2023?
An ordinance authorizing the director of finance of the city of North Canton to make final appropriation amendments for current expenses and related one-time advances and/or permanent transfers of monies made to various funds needed during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and within the available resources in order to balance and close the fiscal year.
Okay, so at the end of the year, we're always moving some funds and different numbers come in. And we talked about this earlier in the month. Are we all good, Gina? Any changes? Okay. All right, I move to adopt then. To make everything whole.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance 96-2023?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an extension agreement in the collective bargaining process by and between the city of North Canton and Paternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated, police lieutenants and sergeants, the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association patrolmen and/or the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association full-time dispatcher/lead dispatcher, if negotiations continue past December 31, 2023 and result in mediation conducted by the Ohio State Employment Relations Board.
Personnel and safety.
So administration is working very hard to negotiate with all of these entities. Should that not occur by December 31, we want to continue under the existing contract. And that's what this legislation is doing. But I have full confidence in the administration. They do a great job. They have in the past. They've proven themselves. They'd be able to work with everybody for a mutually agreeable contract. So, questions? Make a motion to adopt a second reading of ordinance 96-2023.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance 97-2023?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Ashland Street Southwest from the West Brightway of Bambler Avenue Southwest to the West Line of parcel number 920-8625, within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Okay, this is street now. And this is me. So this was a parcel that at one point was used as a private driveway. And like some of the alley things that we've been annexing and giving back to the property owners, this kind of follows the same path as that. Both partners have agreed. It's very amicable. Nothing new on it. So I'm going to move it to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Have a motion and a second to take from the table ordinance 91-2023. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance 91-2023?
An ordinance amending Chapter 192 income tax of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton in order to repeal credits for taxes paid to other municipalities.
Okay. This is committee of the whole. But do you want to start?
Go ahead. That's fine.
I mean, let's have enough of discussion. We've made our comments at the beginning of what it is. And we've heard from the public. And thank you for all your speaking. I'm just going to open it up to everybody. Let's talk about it.
Thank you for those who spoke again. And you know, I think at the beginning, I think this is what we were asking too. Are there different ways? And I think a number of us did leave with other people. We did look. I mean, you could look at what happened this past November with the voting. And you looked at who passed income taxes, who passed police levies, who passed fire. And actually, our whole county as a whole did really well in looking at that. I also spoke with somebody who had been in Maslin when the reciprocity was taken away. And then how it was brought back was brought back after a really short time. And it didn't work. And so I think that's what we were kind of thinking in regards to that and looking at other more creative ways of saying, well, if we can keep some income tax reciprocity in place, what else can we do? And so looking at this, you know, other communities have done this. And I think that that's what we have to do is be willing to look out and say, what are other people doing? Because income tax is, by the state guidelines, the main way to fund cities. And I mean, a little bit, I agree. You know, we don't need to pound our trust and say we have the lowest income tax rate. Because what we heard last week is you will leave if we take that reciprocity away. So I think we need to keep thinking of ways that we're working with you. But we have to have our city services. Because I know North Canton is known for its police and its fire and its schools and the salted streets and the paved roads and our parks. So we need to figure out a way to pave all that. You know, and thank you for saying that about the facilities too. So we had just received that facilities plan. That was a relatively new plan. And I really give administration credit for bringing in people to look at that. And a lot, I think, is still up in the air. I think as different things happen and different projects, if the Hoover company all of a sudden started to build, who knows? That could very much change whether the police is moving. You know, that would be a hard one to say. Is the most valuable piece of property in our city, does it become the most valuable piece of property? And we sell it entirely. I mean, that's what's so neat about, I think, government and change and looking at this. If that becomes what we think it can be, I think there's a lot of different ways that we can look at this. And there's time now to look at this and say, how can we use our city taxes in the best way we can?
More comments? Okay. I will make a motion to adopt. Oh, okay. I'm going to make a motion to amend ordinance 91-2023 in accordance with the red line included in the council packets.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'm going to make a motion. Well, can I have a motion in a second to adopt the first reading of ordinance 91-2023 as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on. Can I have a motion in a second to suspend Council Rule 23 to allow for consideration of what will be ordinance 98-2023 and Resolution 99-2023?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance 98-2023?
An ordinance amending Chapter 192 income tax of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to increase the rate of municipal income tax from 1.5% to 1.75% beginning January 1, 2025, for the purpose of providing funds for the purposes of general municipal operations, maintenance, new equipment, extension and enlargement of municipal services and facilities and capital improvement.
Second. Financing.
Okay, we've talked about this a lot. Are there any thoughts or comments anyone would like to make at this point? How about from the administration? Good, fine. Okay. And I move that we adopt the first reading of ordinance 98-2023.
Carol, did you want to say something?
I'll wait.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of Resolution 99-20.3?
The resolution directing the board of elections to place upon the ballot that a primary election to be held on March 19, 2024, the question of increasing the city of North Canton's rate of municipal income tax from 1.5% to 1.75% beginning January 1, 2025, for the purposes of general municipal operations, maintenance, new equipment, extension and enlargement of municipal services and facilities and capital improvements, and ensuring the same to be emergent.
Okay, this is just a resolution that makes sure that the board of elections can place upon the March ballot. Any questions?
Yeah. I got a question. What happens if it is put on the ballot? It passes. And then, let's say, three or four years from now, it wasn't enough money and we had to go up?
Well, we would do the same process. We would just have to increase the income tax again.
So same process.
Yeah.
Which would be another big discussion and everything like that.
That's, yeah, that's just a process of how you get it passed.
You put it back on the ballot.
Right.
So, yeah, same exact process.
And then over to the other. Okay, anything else? All right. I move to adopt.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let's get a roll call.
Number Stride?
Yes.
Number Rader?
Yes.
Number Ladder?
Yes.
Number Vol?
Yes.
Number Orr?
No.
Number Matheny?
Yes.
Number Niklester?
Yes.
Sixth in favor, one vote.
You need to say the motion carries. Motion carries. Moving on to department reports. Director of Administration. Director of Finance. Ben. Okay, let's go to council reports. We'll start with the last man here.
I want to thank everybody for waiting in the seat and for searching for me in last week. I did have one or two people who reached out via email and phone this week. Want to thank them as well? That's it.
So as Chairperson of Personnel and Safety, the North Canton Police Department would like to let everybody know that they've appointed a new full-time police officer. It's actually a replacement. And that is Mr. Todd Schaefer. Officer Schaefer was recently sworn in by Mayor Wilder. And Chief Kemp was there also. Officer Schaefer is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. Served eight years active duty in multiple deployments to Afghanistan. Upon completing his military service, Officer Schaefer joined the Summit County Sheriff's Office as a deputy assigned to Jail Division. Officer Schaefer's military and law enforcement experience will serve him well as he enters our field training program. So we just like to congratulate you on joining the police department. I would like also mention that Toys for Tots are collecting at the fire department. If you care to donate to that, you can do so at the fire department. Along those lines of safety and of that, as we finalize the last of the leaf raking and pulling them out, I'd ask everybody to remember that you're also responsible for the curb. All those leaves that go down in our gutter, help your neighbors, your other neighbors that may have had flooding issues in the past to maybe help avoid some of that. Make sure that you get all the leaves out of the gutter and provide safety here. So appreciate that. I think that what's happened tonight in moving things forward is a step in the right direction. But it's only a small step in a lot of hard decisions that are yet to come in order for us to meet the needs of the city. And I hope everybody to keep that in mind. But more importantly, reach out to your council member and talk to them. Let them know what's going on, how you feel. And then there are opportunities. And if you care to volunteer time or want to become a order of law, please reach out. We would appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I voted no. Why? And this is being Mr. Osborne. Okay, I think 2% would be a good round number to be at. This is going to come, I think, things are only going to go up and up and up. You know, I don't know where the yard of concrete is right now. Maybe $150, something around there, pretty close to. You know, we need improvement on our roads. Our roads are very important to us. Same as we have no complaints on our snow roads. They pop the snow and we do a very, very good job. You know where the borders are in North Canton by just being that. So I voted no on that. There are a lot of cuts. There's a lot of cuts. When I moved to this city 35 years ago, it was a nice city. You know, Hoover is still going on. It's about Hoover's been gone for 15 to 20 years now. Yes, I wasn't in council back then, but those administration people back then should have done something. And we're here to pay the price unfortunately. But we're listening to you. And, you know, vote how you feel is best when it's on the ballot. Thanks for coming. I'd like to see more people out on Mondays. You know, you want to be part of it. So be part of it and come to council. So thank you again.
I thought yesterday because I thought this was a decent compromise. I believe that every resident, every resident has an obligation to share the costs operating a city. of operating a city in a meaningful way. I'm not blind, however, to the need for credit, because I recognize that other communities like Akron and Canton drew their income tax rates at astronomical levels, and my dad generally don't provide very good services. Importantly for me, one of the groups that was missing last week were senior citizens. And I think our seniors shouldn't have been, shouldn't be touched by this. We rely upon them to support our schools, and the property tax in this particular matter was off the table, and I thought that was good. There are those who have thrown around, let's get to two percent. I would remind them to look at Akron and Canton, which took their income taxes to two and above. What those communities did, overwhelmed tension, was cleaned out their businesses. Any business that wasn't physically anchored in that community often left. They went to Jackson Township, they went to Clay Township, or some other road tax entity. It's a real issue when you get to two percent. It puts pressure on employers, it puts pressure on employees, and you should be mindful that we have tax-free zones within about two thousand feet. Actually, it's less than that. It's the end of West Naples, where business can go. Think back what Canton used to look like when the insurance agencies were downtown, the accounts were downtown, the lawyers were downtown, the doctors were downtown, the professionals were downtown, the advertising agencies were downtown. They're gone. They went to Jackson. There were other issues, parking being wanted, but I can tell you that you can tax their amount. Their employees, most companies all got about four percent wages, like picking up and moving, just got it, not doing anything, because they went to a new location, tax-free location. So, if you look at tax bubbles, see that I'm not going to have to deal with it. I think it behooves you to be very dispassionate about who pays for what and how we get there. And when you've heard people say, well, you know, you've got, spend money on safety. Everybody around this table would acknowledge that we have done a better job at the public's request on code enforcement, building permits, all the things that were dogging this city have been cleaned up with professional help. This is a good process. I think it's great that everybody was here. But be mindful that what we're talking about now are the things that make this community worth living. I've been in communities where they don't pave the streets, or they do by assessing. We did that at one time. We don't want to do that. Lipton will never get paved. Other street will, because they'll be willing to pay for it, have the means to pay for it. It's an all-in, all for one, and one for all. That's what's making this community great. So that's, I support this, albeit reluctantly, because it is a compromise. But it's my part of comment to you is be careful about where you go. This community, this group has worked very, very hard to drive employment and investment opportunities for singularly hard over the last sixty months, but that alone probably wasn't going to do it. I've got great news on almost every corner, that it's hard work. And if you don't think that people look at tax rates when you come to your community, dream on. They do, particularly small businesses.
Thank you.
I support this too, but I'm disappointed, I think. I don't know, I'm worried about things that I don't know how we're going to fund. And I think, I also just want to comment out that moving something from committee to the council agenda does not equal a yes vote from everyone. I think that there would have been conversations last week. I think that we had all done research and talked with constituents and asked questions, and there would have been conversation here. So to think that we all were just going to be like, yes, that's not accurate, and it's kind of not fair. That's all.
I just want to make a comment on the state built. Martin Gaygaby, kind of with you et cetera, he's done a really great job. Many of you had said years back how our zoning and enforcement area was a real issue, and we said we wanted experts that knew what they were doing, they understood the state guidelines and enforcement, and any of you can do planning meetings or zoning meetings, it's been a bold difference. And we don't have the constituents that are angry in that in many cases. So, in an issue that we're dealing with right now, and we're quote enforcement issues, and we're working through those, but that's what you ask for as citizens. We're tired of seeing things in disrepair or businesses not following certain rules and abiding by them. So, Martin Gaygaby and his career has done an amazing job and brought their mercy.
Thank you all for speaking, and thank you for remaining calm and kind of keeping everything just simple. I appreciate that. Everybody appreciates that. You know, I think it's a fair compromise, but the beauty about this is it doesn't matter what the set of us think out here. It's up to you. It's going to be on the ballot box. This is an example of direct democracy. So it is in the ordinance. Some news, I think, kind of went under the radar in the last couple of weeks, which I think, it's not directly the city, but it's the schools. The North Canton City Schools got a three-point-eight-five million dollar grant to have a welding facility revamped, which in this age for aging infrastructure and all the, all the things that revolve around welding is a huge step for, for our local economy. And these are skills that the kids are going to be able to use regionally across the United States everywhere. So just wanted to point that out. That's all I have. Final call for new business. Okay, see none? Moving on to the meetings calendars. November twenty-seventh, we'll have a public hearing on ordinance sixty-nine dash twenty-two-three, and then we have, we will have a city council meeting. This will be the final of the current term. And then on December first, we'll have the organizational meeting. So I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?